August 21st, 2021. This is the regularly scheduled duly advertised meeting of the Warner County Planning and Land Commission. And, uh, if you're listening to this, you will all be staying in. I believe this is the birth of the highest status in America. And we should look at the religious hands. One nation, we are without religion, we would have better leading of us. So, uh, Rob Clark, China's left, Commissioner Frankenbach.
Commissioner Adams.
Commissioner Reddick. Commissioner Davis presiding. We have a forum. We will proceed from your straight. And the agenda, there is a change, but we'll deal with that. Consent agenda of public meeting. Uh, we have the minutes from June 24th and July 15th. Chance to look at those. Any corrections or objections or anything? Is that the one we talked about? On email or was that, yeah, on the, yeah. Into that, I don't know, to that question that made. Well, pretty much. Anybody want to do the details? Those are the minutes from July 1st. July 1st, July 15th. In the packet here, we got June 24th, July 1st and July 15th. The agenda only falls out June 24th and July 15th. So, okay, so we're, we're going to deal with July 1st later. All right, bye. And that, uh, we have this the other, this is July 1st. So that takes us out of the consent agenda into the public hearing portion. We have the procedures handy. Up on the screen are our procedures for the hearing. Staff will make a report. As it is vered, the applicant may draw a real project for public testimony. And once testimony is complete, the applicant can provide the proposal or answer questions as, as necessary. Post the public hearing portion or the testimony portion and commissioners deliberate about the file. So we have, um, three files tonight together over 5:30. The first is, uh, AM 0009-201. It's unchanged 0017-201. Comprehensive map amendment, it's unchanged for all. And, uh, who, who dealt with his, his. Same number. It's not very sensitive. There's a lot of files that's not good for hearing tonight, but there's some. For the county commissioner, the three has to be about. Not dealing with what's on the agenda. So anyway, uh, yeah, part of this stuff. It's going to delay certain or anything. It's going to come back to you differently. The original application was for one person. You'll come back to. Okay, so. They said, see, the, 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 so strongly the best is not unfolding, so. So that must not be anger tonight. So we want to. Files are here, so the next one on the list is probably 0011-201 on size of them. Requesting lot size of them investigated since July 5th, 41 acres across two parcels. Are one, four acres and one of four acres by family exemption. Garbage located, you know, within the five acre zone and off of Highway 2 in section 26, country seven, three west. There's great. But as the procedure said, first up is the staff report, so we can go ahead. So we call for conflicts of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest? No. Assistants in participating tonight.
Tonight, commissioners, thank you for being here. Um, so we're here to, um, discuss a lot size minimum variance application. Um, property located on Highway 2 in diverse area of city impact. Uh, this is the, uh, site pack divided by the applicant and indicates, um, how they'd like to propose to divide their property. Um, we're selling through a five acre, um, and as repeated before, looking at a 1.4 acre and a four acre split, you know, R5 zone. Um, the property is divided by power lines. So some side characteristics of the property as mentioned before, it's a 5.1, 4.1 acre parcel. Um, it's in the rural residential comprehensive advantage plan, zone R5. Um, it's accessed by an easement, it should remember on the 5.0 there. Also, lots of rocks on the property between 15 and 29 percent grade, as well as a little bit in 30 percent grade and above, kind of in the south portion of the parcel. Doesn't contain a bar fund. Um, there's one type of soil on the property. It is, uh, fondary slip loan. It's not fire department, it is well drained. And for the application, water and sewer service would be by adjacent properties, um, were booked. And, um, there is a, a 1.12 on the neighboring property to the, uh, east. Uh, certified by West Side Fire District. Knights, Carter, County School District 84. Um, Jason Johnson, our certified floodgate manager reviewed the file, um, said one zone X. Um, so, you know, no significant flood risk there. Um, there wasn't a further review required because we're going to get a lot size minimum variance to help with the development at this time. Um, the final variety agency is on 15th June. Um, got your comments back, going pretty generic from the hearsay, bone environmental. Uh, they've got comments at the state of the project. It's pretty typical, um, until someone's building or they're in a way, you know, kind of forced to narrow it up or near, um, shoreline or something of that nature. Pushing in also positive, they had no comments. We didn't receive any public comments and our other agencies didn't respond. So, um, in the look at evidence, we kind of look at, um, the conditions that apply to properties that may or may not apply to other properties in the surrounding vicinity. And, um, you know, the applicant kind of broke down, you have a proposal to how they want to divide the property. And, um, I would highlight here, you have that, uh, they indicate that there are several current properties, um, in that same zoning district. And also in our ten district, if you kind of look east, um, that are lower below the five acre minimum lot size and ten respectively. Then, you know, the applicant isn't responsible for putting power lines there, um, they were there when they purchased the property. Um, and so, uh, they, they also wrote about access to, you know, the property and how that'll be done. And, um, just closing by saying that they indicated no detrimental effects to the neighboring property's request. Um, so these are the standards we use to review the file and make our determination. So looking at the property, um, you know, kind of historical imagery from the earth, um, you know, just, I used the times wire back to 2009. You can see those power lines over there. And they acquired the neighboring property to the east in, uh, 2013. So I kind of ran a buffer analysis in GIS because I wanted to see, okay, what's the average, you know, acreage surrounding this property from the 1500 foot buffer? Um, and, uh, you know, ran, we actually could have looked at two different analyses. This one actually shows, um, the average acreage, as we can see, is 5.45. Um, that's the buffer line intersecting with all the parcels. And as we'll see in the next slide, um, I ran a second analysis just to kind of see what's the average acreage that intersects with the centroid. Um, reason for doing this is, um, in the literature with, you know, grocery services, general speaking, um, one of the ways, yes, they see what's within the service areas, looking at where those centroids intersect with the buffer. Um, kind of to remove biases on, on accessing something. And so I kind of just used it in this analysis too. And so looking at this one, um, I go back to the screen here. This next slide will show you all those parcels that are located, the centroids intersect with that buffer. And so the average acreage of that for that two is, uh, 5.13 acres. As we can see here, there are some, put south here, got a rock off, um, and they're certainly well below one acre. So, um, you know, for, for various, we kind of have to look at what's in the area, right? What's in the same zone, what's in the same vicinity? And, you know, how is this property unique and, and different than other properties? And so I kind of threw down a little bit and, and as we'll see in the next slide, um, you know, the power lines to divide a number of properties kind of looking eastward in the rural five zoning district. And here is the zone map, kind of showing those properties again highlighted. And so as a consequence of that, and looking at those other properties that are divided by the power lines and, um, looking at the average acreage within the 1500 foot buffer vicinity. Um, stack building is not consistent with park guy and vice code, um, and therefore we are commuting denial. Um, I would also add, one of my considerations in reviewing this file was looking at the way in which the land's correctly developed. Is there a level on it? Is there a subject system on it? Is there a house on it? Um, does, how can we justify this, right? And so I wasn't able to justify it looking at the facts. Then it's time I can take any questions.
Questions, Mr. Stagg? Hearing this. Can we move ahead to the applicant's presentation? A pure break there. Well, either way, the speaker is, you know, the, 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 I'm seeing, so either way, and then your name, Edna's.
All right, Nick Nichols, um, 128 Cross Road, San Point. And, uh, I do want to thank you, you did all the hard work. Um, I've been in the county for many, many years. I used to do firework for the Department of Labor, worked on the, um, offensive plan back in the day. And I understand the process really well. Um, I also understand the variance process and there's this variance for the purpose of varying from the code. And so as I presented this, um, I'm looking to get this, uh, split as a family exemption. Um, my hope is I've got a son that, um, has suffered from brain cancer and I'm hoping to, uh, get a place that's close to us. And I know that is not, does not pertain to the land and the land use, but this is our personal reason. So that being said, um, the couple of things that Chad that I, uh, that was in my original document issues that, uh, you know, I proposed it within 1500 feet of the property. There were a number of properties that did exist that were below the, the current zone that's out there right now, the five and the 10. Um, I know this, using the method that Chad used that is related to grocery stores, um, it put it within the center of the properties. But I'd like to present that in just if I may, and I've listened before, wouldn't they have been in their exhibits, or would we keep one? And, um, I'm actually, I think I made that further. So, uh, what I would like to present is that, uh, as you look at that, uh, two things. One, that the property, uh, the one, uh, were all end-to-end properties that did not fall within the, um, the 1500 feet as Chad represented. Which are just here on the other side of, uh, the, um, carpet wood. And they were down to one acre actually, because it was listed in my description of property sizes that were within 1500 feet. I just didn't go to the center, actually, the property down here where it was. Number two of that is, I'd like to present that if you look at the properties both west and east, you'll see on this map that the power lines actually used to house the property boundary on itself, except this, this parcel right here. Which happened to be a parcel with the family next door, home has a larger parcel than usually all your weapons that provided, uh, for themselves decades ago. Um, and that being said, you know, having the, um, moving the property boundary and having the split available works, will actually will use this. Will provide two, two items for us. Number one, uh, create two parcels for our family's stated desire and need. And, um, secondly, it would, uh, fall in line with the rest of the property boundaries that are ultimately can follow the, uh, existing power line, hundred foot easement power lines. That kind of runs right through, or through the edge of the property, through the property. So, um, that being said, I have had it protested and, um, I do have a copy of that I'll present to you. So we can have that, uh, that is approved. And three local locations, uh, one for onsite, uh, of the power line on the 1.4 acre parcel. Uh, and two other spots on the market parcel of the four acre parcel. Um, so that's been preliminary, preliminary done. Um, and I have a well trailer that is, um, hired and contracted to come up this month to actually put a well onsite, um, on the, uh, right over the power line on the south side. Uh, this property multiplies within the R5, um, and there are many properties less than five acres within, you know, within 1500 feet of it. It is in that area, the zone of, uh, it looks over the water, it's got a, and, and sits a little bit different than more of the commercial timber ground R5 properties that are out there, those provide a little bit different, uh, service to, uh, for residential use. So I guess that's all the presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Your questions still up, I bet. So as far as, you say you've got a drill coming out. Any information about the rest of the area?
Well, they're, in, in this, I mean, my law is like 800 feet deep. My neighbor's world, which happens to be my son's, um, to the west of me is 300 feet deep. The property adjacent to this, uh, boys' properties in the three, it's 280 feet, 280. One of them's 280, one of them's 230, they're all right in there. Um, I just happened to, um, when I bought our property, which is immediately adjacent to that, we just happened to drill into a solid place that didn't get water. Until they get it at 150. Now I've got it, but, or is it, or it's spring? Yeah, and, and no water then I can use. So water does not seem to be a problem and, uh, subject is completely approved.
Okay, um, can you leave it, lots of questions for the end? Looks like not, thank you. So, um, did the audience have anything to say about the spot? Great spot. So, what we, what we want to do. I did go around and see my neighbors and everyone seemed to think it was in higher waters up there, so. Okay, uh, therefore, since no one else wants to testify, I propose to put a testimony portion. So, here you are. Okay. Let's, let's everybody think.
Let me see, I'm going to get to different angle on it. I still have enough time, I want to point a pole being, so I'm still on that. I don't think I've got the state, but there's been other options that the applicant might have, such as the baby U. This would definitely be an option. Where splitting is, and, and what does it have? And again, you'll have to split through the other half, but it may be an option as well. Different property, I don't know.
So, yeah, it is interesting when the, the case of this order, dividing a property into two, the west of the subject property, using the right way, the, the power and right way. All those properties in the west of my neighbors. Some of the large, uh, the, the, the rich and parcel.
And so it makes the property line go all the way. Let me see.
Yeah, yeah, just.
But to Suzanne's point, they're, they're not quite so small as 1.4.
No, there's only, according to the, the, one lot in the area over, uh, off of Car Creek. Which is another interesting one that appears from the sketch that when they divided that one, maybe it came from all the property on the east side of Car Creek Road. But they chose to put a lot line on the north side of the east and around the south side. And could have maybe made that lot, so 1.09, uh, 1.9 or two acre lot, uh, two acre lot to the south. Or so, we have to do the math. A bunch of twos, threes and fours, for sure.
Yeah, they would have, they would have made it more of a valid argument if those two have acres, because there's the, the, the urban and water services.
Want to be able to address that later for you?
Um, yeah, there's, uh, pretty definitely.
Pretty, there's, I wish I went to the, the, the questions of the applicant, I think it's hard for it to ask. What do you think, there's another question, you know? Oh, about the left. Are you talking about building well, uh, opposed to being the south block and certain of our block? Or are two of us? Um, right, we build one, so I can afford. And, uh, second, we have to put the other one up. So the warehouses, we serve by, by their own way. Water in that area is really good, just heading that bit there. So, so therefore, yeah, the, the, uh, potential is for each lot to have its own assembly system. Well, uh, I don't know if there's anything, any, or report about, basically, some adjacent properties to wells. But we looked at all of that and it was good. They, they have it out there. Okay, when they look at that, so. So, there's the hills. People, you need to reach the west side of the central. So, whatever, so we just, a bit more discussion on the table or a big discussion? Can I answer to any question about this, two and a half acres that was asked?
Uh, yeah, that would, yeah. As you might have noticed on the map, uh, the slope map that was presented by Chad, um, this slope is drop off the world, uh, not very far below the, um, second building site. So the first building site would be able to be up above the power line. And the next one is just below the power line. And then this slope's new drop off, not making it impossible to move, but making it very difficult to, um, in that area. So, um, that was the, that is really just so perjudicial about that slope. It's very steep going down.
Yeah, and that's certainly reflected by the location of the houses on the adjacent properties. They're on, the power line, correct from the south and, like, sort of. So the map, that's kind of how we do it, we roll it, so that it's more interesting. Which is why I stay right at the position. Okay, so there's the answers, information. Desire of the commission. Desire of permission. So, uh, Suzanne mentioned that. There's five acres parcel existing. You can have any view.
But it's an option, I mean, it's a, it is a other option for them dividing it up so small.
And obviously, that would say a lot of some kind of.
Right, that's exactly kind of how I was going with that. Said, hey, you get eight different causes to make, it's so small, what is another option?
But the rationale for even putting the power line on the south edge of the property is.
Much, right?
Made people strip off a little bit, I don't know, you know, all these people.
Right, because there's several that actually brought down as well, so it's not.
The stone carries. So, it's not as severe.
Because it's saying, well, we didn't cause this because the power lines didn't hurt. Then don't cause it to be so small because of the power lines, make it a little bit larger.
So, let's get a motion up.
Okay, Commissioner Frankie Bach, I'm going to deny this project file B-011-21, lot size minimum variance to buy a 5.41 acre parcel into two parcels. One 1.4 acre parcel and one 4 acre parcel based on the filing conclusions. And I think the conclusions of law are actually accurate where they're written. So conclusion one, conditions apply to this property that do apply to other properties in the same vicinity. Um, those conditions are not for this only applicant. But conclusion three, the granting of variance is in conflict with the public interest in that it will be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. And that's to me because it comes so far below the five acre minimum for the area. It comes down into the region where we are normally expect to see urban services. Back to the motion here. Uh, the decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared, the testimony received at this hearing. I further move without the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as amended. As stated, really. This action does not involve taking a private property. An action that could be taken if I need to obtain the variances to one file a new application with planning department and meet the standards required by Modern Counterparty Rights Code or appeal the planning and zoning commission's decision to the county.
So, Commissioner Frankie Bach has made a motion to recommend denial of the variance. As requested. Is there a second?
Commissioner Russell, a second.
A motion for a second to deny project file B-011-21, lot size minimum variance. Any further discussion? Okay, now, file in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those may. Okay, motion passes to. So, uh, to say that the conclusion or the solution to deny, would we apply to something for property issues? All right, that is the first file, second. So, the next case is file M O D 0005-21, modification due December 575. Profile ZC 365-18. Duncan, Jean White, Stanley, Stewitt, requesting to remove the language future divisions of land within reasonable boundaries, warrant, clean surface, no volume, private roads. Ordinance number 575, present change 365-18. And based on procedures before, first thing up, the staff report, so. Any conflicts on this one?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff, appreciate you being here tonight. So, to discuss a modification of a conditional zone change. That was agreed back in 2018 for the Quillridge subdivision in the Blanchard area. Uh, this is where the file is located off of, located off of Cothrim's Lane. Specifically, you were. It's divided. These are the specifics of that, of what they'd like to remove from that zoning ordinance. Catch to that file. And, you know, and just to summarize it, you know, before the land is well, it must be paved and or paving. And so the request is to remove both of these components from the ordinance. Um, so we're looking at two 10 acre parcels. Um, they're in a rural residential property, it's a land use plan. They are zone rule five acre. And accessed by Goldfinch Lane. And there are no map slopes, wetlands or stream systems that run through the properties. This is about the environmental features. Um, there are two different types of soils on the property. Um, both are marked to characterize as part and part and one if you're native. And it's both the properties are served by an individual septic system well. And then Spirit Park District, owned by, by again, and Power. And then Barred County School District, Unit 3. So Jason Johnson, again, there'd be this, um, these properties, and then floods are next, so flood risk is low. And, uh, no further floodway review is required because we're not looking at, you know, knowing any kind of structures or anything of that nature. Um, the file is, you know, relative to the agencies, as we can see on the screen here on, uh, to watch this. The comments. Um, we did get a comment back from Chief. And, um, this was his comment, Quillridge was spoken against me before the county passed the five acre. It's on Goldfinch Lane. And now referring to Mr. Lee's property, Mr. property and the properties, um, northeast of this property, these properties. Um, pretty much the area does not be accessing those standards. For I know Dr. Firego, those lots should have not been rezoned because the density has further increased. This is not a long area to do this work on, and the road ordinance requires paid roads. Should be maintained throughout the area. Um, D Q L's comment said, saying there's no environmental impacts at the stage of the project. Um, could be, on the way to Sui District, the comment said, saying it's outside of their bounds. They've been, they say that they've been highly district. We had a couple of, like, your called it fishing game, um, which is notable. And because in Mr. Peterson's file, they didn't reply and said there would be impact to, uh, well, but. Uh, probably a hospital district, quad four, city quad four. Um, we received no public knowledge for this file. Uh, these are the statements we used to, to view the file in relation to the request. And, um, to me, you know, kind of, okay, whether they zone out, so they're zoning a lot. Putting the property has an effect on that zone again, where the density that's currently allowed. It does not. And then also, and as we see, um, by the applicant's presentation, um, that she had prepared. And, you know, how much of this road they, um, is not paved, right? And we see, it's, it's less than a quarter acre. It's actually a point, you five acres, or sorry, not, not. And so we're not looking at a large stretch of land and, uh, there's paving just down the road. So, in some ways, not good. Uh, a lot of it's, they can put just as many homes on there, ADUs, RVs, with or without the division of land. And so, consequences of that, staff recommend any approval? We need to find a consistent rural landscape. Can I take any questions?
Questions, you say?
It's, it's interesting to me because the number of, you know, that file during the segment, staff recommended, all right, so.
That's correct, right.
So this analysis, like you're saying it is consistent with going back on your previous recommendation.
Yeah, so that's another 2018, that was not the player who worked the file. Um, and, you know, bar counting has been in general sense, we don't have conditional zones, so that wasn't a recommendation. And that recommendation was, you know, agreed to by the developer, from my understanding, for that development. And so, um, because as a consequence of that, and because they, you know, agreed to it, um, to be fair, I, I don't know why they stopped paying. Just out of some little something. So, yeah.
See, the people doesn't like the office that night, and it came up. And it was a heated debate back and forth, and the outbreak just jumped in.
So, so what happened with this file is, is, uh, they came in and applied for zone to 10 acre lots. And, and then after they did that, they created an eight lot short block. And proceeded to sell four of those lots, two of those lots, I guess. And then he came back and applied for a rezon to five acre minimums. And this, this, uh, these two lots got included in the, in this lot. And so, but because, and then he came back, then because he sold those two lots, he didn't, uh, didn't certify because he had sold them. So he had sold them, they had them down into the fines. So he, so that's why he stopped paving at the end of those lots. And all of this, that's all he was in the end of those lots is, is, at the end of that building is those two lots. So, it just, it just wasn't, you know. And then the way that, uh, the way that the notational recommendation was written was that all land requirements required them to be paved, and so no matter how they tried to divide the property, if it was a family exception or whatever, it still required, um, paving. And so, basically, what, what they requested was however long that is, 400 feet or 500 feet out. But they requested you not to have to pay that one, that's huge. So do you have the backup?
There you go, sir. Excuse me for a second here, so I can just look at the property. I'm quite familiar with the DA at this point. All right, so you have the properties, um, and would you like me to measure in deep, no?
No, let's tell them this, oh, show. See the two channels there, you know? Yeah, those, those are the two channels that were left out of the new subdivision process. So because they were left out of that subdivision process, he didn't, he didn't pave it all the way to the end. The way it was to pay, we had worse pays and we left it, we had hammerhead it still. And then, and then the twenties up above to the right, we just, we, you know, the county just put in the zone change for fires in fact. So, so these folks came in and asked to modify this condition for those specific lots. Because again, the challenge with it, what staff had was that the, the 10 acre parcel on one side, so they required to pave the whole one or just a half of the road? And that's where, that's where it got moved off a couple of years ago, when the property owners, like in the first part, was, was they're like, oh, so I want to split this into five, but I don't have to pave half the road. It just, it just got screwed in, I think those, those original property owners, then so, they reached the line in the back to, so. You know, that, that's why the request is here, is because it just got left out of that process. They don't think they should be required to bring in paving out for the end of that road. That's what the hammerhead is. Paving goes to that area. And the next. Wherever it is. 400 feet. Second condition, certainly.
And then Goldfinch, he doesn't pave either.
No. But it's, they're all in public, it's perfect. But I went up to Mr. Coen Nielsen's property, I did a site visit and kind of looked at the gravel road. Um, they're still in pretty good shape. So I haven't looked out at the end, but it was a dry spring. Conditions, conditions vary. We have the whole principle that as these lots get to five acres, it was, that was, I recall, and to, necessity to break the road to a higher standard. So, it's five acres. So, okay, split five.
And then we got the, the concern, it's not a fire.
Yeah, that area.
And so to me, the biggest issue is, is less about, in my opinion, it's less about those, more about the one way in, one way out concern.
Which was, as I've talked about, is every part of the reason for the paving, so that it would be consistent and reliable. You know, and into and out of the air across that ideal parcel.
Fire just to me.
And with the other approval, on the kind of, upside of it, so forth. So, there's, there was a lot going on that seems to be tripling off. But the potential is still there to. Do you have a, do you have an application for, for, you know? You know, we'll, we'll get there, we can just, yeah. All right, so any further questions for staff? Therefore, let's hear from the applicant. And they have an address for the record, please.
My name is Jean White. Um, and I address this 453 Goldfinch. I live here. Um, I don't want to break you in history because Martin Gate, and, um, previous present journal last file, um, provided that. So. So, I want to go to the next slide. Uh, both of our parcels are ten acres, they're currently mod, uh, excuse me, currently zoned out by a rural residential five acres. The modification that we're requesting does not impact density because we can already place homes there. And it doesn't affect any of the other properties within the rezoned areas of this file. Now, I'm going to go to the next. Um, that's all at home, that's the Jewett's. Uh, this, this is an aerial view, paint hammerhead property, pavement ends literally at our property line. We have pavement, and I'll show you in the next, on the next slide, we have pavement to the property line. Um, that is 1.25 mile, 1.25 miles, I'm even going to pull them off, I can go to the. Just again, wanted to show you the property names and the road where the pavement ends. Literally on most properties, we have paint hammerheads, which we get access to our property from that pavement. Um, I'll go to the next. And it's just another, just a different view, um, the left and right, just a little bit better with the hammerheads, so. That's it, going back.
And Gina, your request is to remove the condition.
To paint the road, because what they're saying is that we paid that road. This road right here, the pavement ends here, this is road edge lane and it's, it's dirt. So I can place a, on that if I wanted to. But we got to buy the property, that, this little section of road right there.
Yeah. Not in the county, they are, maybe it is, it hasn't, it hasn't been in this county, but, uh.
Are you going to comment? Yeah. But wait, I'm off the copy and order, right? Okay, but, so now what we have recently done is, uh, approved a, a rezon of some of the twenties falling back to the right on, on good finish. And there is not requirement for pavement for those lots, so really got to be a little, little sketchy to try to, uh, we just don't, don't see why we would have to be required to pay. When we are, uh, there is no requirement for paving on the same road, really kind of, kind of, kind of hitting this, um, in a paving requirement department.
Well, it, and, yeah. Yeah, I think what we're seeing, thinking back to the previous Glow Ridge developments, we're progressive into it. There were a lot of lots back there, twenties and so forth, and they started dividing, five, so collecting. Altogether was, well, maybe you got this, there's a lot of traffic on the road in these two days. Then you have the one at the end. Can't make the end guy pay to, from where it ends up to his place, so.
There's also been an access needed, this can be recorded, for two of the files that had been recently rezoned. And the access is going to come off of Songford. So what I have, two, we're going to have less of them back through the, um, I mean, we, we, we.
So, so he's talking about something completely different, though he knows he's talking about this property right there, which was one of the ones that was recently approved for four, five, our files.
Right.
This gentleman actually owns a property on Songford. His eas, one of the concerns was the roadway, the traffic on the dirt road. He's splitting this into ten and two tribes. He's giving easement to these two back tribes off of Songford, off of his other property. So, that's completely, and that's what he was making, what my husband was making reference to. I did want to adjust quickly the, what, and tell me if I'm out of line and I'll be quiet, uh, the fire chief's comments, um. Although he, he, he does not yet say anything about a moratorium on building. He's not, he's not, he's not stating there's a moratorium, but he just keeps saying it, said it over and over. And, and I, while I understand the potential of an, in, I, I, we, association has talked about that. But anyway, I have to, sometimes, e, egress, egress, I'm nervous, can you tap, I'm going to complete your sentence.
Should these songs aren't paid? Because, I mean, that was the whole concept, that you could see, we don't feel the five acre lots, that was the reason. So up in this northeast corner of that original section, where it starts to pave away, or nature changes, at least now. And, and also, we all know something, it's always going to divide. Um, yeah, it's. What are ten years from now, are these five acres up there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
What are ten years from now, everything's five acres. Right back to the same old that was originally, uh, dealt with, with the Orange. And that's, 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 that's one of the, one of the weaknesses of Melvin and Warner County. The next guy in shouldn't have to pay, but then it's the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy. All of a sudden, we got a whole square mile of ground, and there's no services, there's no provision for this, that, the other. So I, I, that's more markets, and I, I, see now, it, it was the folks that were down.
So. The rural residential, do we have in this staff report?
Uh, the, the rural zoning district, that's how they're referring to. Yeah, so, yeah, but, I mean, the rural zoning district doesn't per se mention road standards specifically. But, you know, when we address road standards, we look at short plats and subdivisions. And so, you know, through the my own division process, at least thus far, we have not, you know, created a road standard. And I think, Gina, that's what you're kind of referring to. Um, also, I'd mention that, you know, that the properties north, um, you know, they were, they were left unfarmed. So the, the priority for painting was, they weren't part of that subdivision, but. Potential there. Sorry, so on five acre, uh, even now, there are lots where the existing houses are located, could.
Correct.
So it's, the potential's there to do it. Right. And why, why would the underlying need for higher standard roads not keep working its way to the northeast corner of that section?
I think potentially a lot of that was, the developer paid, I mean, it's like the, he paid for that. And then he increased the cost of the property and sold it to people. But now, you've got one or two people that are required to cover those, those costs, but everybody pay costs on the other.
Any, any further that you want to add? Do you want to speak to your intent of why you want to divide the property? I mean, we talked, kind of talked about on the phone briefly, the reason for why you want to divide the property.
Absolutely. So, my son, we actually wanted to give our son, not my acres to move. We have three children and one lives here, and his concern is, I don't want to fight with the family members. So our initial request was going to be come through, uh, wanted to do a family exemption, which we can't because it's already planted, so we can't do that. So this was our next, our next option. So that, I mean, that, that, that's, that's why we want to do it, it's, it's not to sell it, it was, I mean, it's for our son. And we can build, and he can build there now, he's like, mom, I can build that house there now. The challenge is if something happens to you or dad, or even dad, then I'm fighting with my brothers and sisters over this property. And he goes, I don't want to have to fight with them.
In the opinion of this world, frankly, it's, it's cost prohibitive for us or whatever, and we said that we only have the means to do that. That's real cut and dry.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, yeah. That's what it comes down to, but, uh. Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
So, thank you for your. Something, yes.
I'm actually the neighbor that was the, uh, person in charge of, I think, prison in the, was on her property while she was talking about, you know, the lots. Check, I can talk definitely, just a quick, you mentioned a lot of, of, yeah, some things up. Just kind of kind of break down a few things that they were talking about and just why I think it's a good idea and it's important. So, what they're pointing out, this is Mr. and Mrs. Meis' apartment right here. And I actually just found out about this, they haven't told me, because kind of, he's going to use his lot to give access to some of that, so that's one less set of problems there. I just recently sold all of the ten and two fives that I had, and the same person who has made it, I mean, he is going to recombine them into a twenty. He does not want to have neighbors that close, so that's the most impacted there. And then, with Chief Cooper, I mean, I'm going to kind of give two words as one stone, and that's one, reiterate what Mr. Chambers pointed out, the density issue. He keeps on going on and on, every time anybody wants to do anything, including a lot of businesses, and they're sure about the density gain issue. And I will point out once again, as she was trying to, how is this part of any concern when you deal with fire problems, not a bare lot? So, extra lots, your houses, property. So, to be serious about stopping fire acres or mitigating it, he would want to be housing more total. So, we're, so, so he's talking about mobile aid and you tell there's a road extra besides the area right here. Obviously, necessary, so. There's a double incident, so, from this area has to say. That you can use two houses, just like the ones they got here, on each of these lots, if they're not to. They're running out, there's something about the house right there, they drive right out onto the hammerhead. And it's the same density as if they split it, engaged in the lot. There is no difference when it comes to the density and impact on this road from that versus if it's going to two or five. Except, if they split it, they have to pay it for some reason, that score. Uh, and then, as I, like, I can live with the presentation I did here, you know, it applies here anyway. As Mr. Chambers once again pointed out, rural zoning does not have five acres, so it's a part of it. Now, I know this goes a little bit in because it was part of a plat, a, a, a land plat, an actual subdivision, so, you know. But still, if the art, the rural zone does not have any kind of paving or any road standards at all, a part two. These two lots, only these two, or a hundred other lots having that requirement on it. Despite the fact they already could have extra density if they wanted it, it's kind of ridiculous, you know, kind of on that score. So, you know, that's just, I didn't want to, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Eric Snorer in the 209 program. Um, I'm a deep, as far as the, um, the resident goes, I have the only inch now on my property, as a new. Um, more, more lots we have, more people coming in, it's left on that, uh, uh, spirit of the pieces of time, exactly, I'm sure you can hear me now. Um, they have access off of that, into that end there for those two lots. If, you know, having that word stripped and from the, from the plat, I wouldn't think that's a, they can still get back to that side of that, right, end there.
That's right, say, okay, thank you. Ready else? Don't say anything? Ready else? Um, I don't see a need for rebuttal or, or anything else you want to add, but I think you said it pretty well. So it was a public testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry, there was a.
Oh, you got somebody on, oh, there was, sorry, sorry. Shall we, we open the testimony, sir?
Sorry, my bad. Reg, can you give us?
Yes, thank you, Reg Crawford, Sandpoint, Idaho. I, I'm not weighing in on either side of this, I, I don't have an opinion on that necessarily. I just want to say that this falls into, uh, the category of what, of the buyer beware that we've created in this county. And if we ignore the subdivision rules because it hurts individuals. I mean, it doesn't seem like it's fair to the community and beyond. I don't, I don't want to, um, rain on this particular case, but we are a buyer beware coun, uh, county. And this is what the, the commissioners in the planning has set us up for. And it hurts citizens when the subdivision design standards aren't followed because people aren't made aware of it. I, I hate to see individuals penalized, but I'm just wanting to point out that this falls into that category. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, somebody else on line? Right now, it was public discipline. For the preparation. Favorite, it brought that, by density, it brought the, obviously, safety concerns. It went off any overhead, thank you, and that was, we had to, like, ah. Very long, extensive, next year. Yeah.
So, can I, this, I'm, uh, if you come to us, if you come to us, if you have a ten acre parcel on a five acres, okay, well, as you said, that's, so that's a, as was explained, as well, you know, your accident, yes, you. Yeah. Good, good, good.
So, yeah. So, I didn't take your in the private area. It's already been decided. I don't know. You're all. Fair enough topic, right? Any questions? Yeah, I've been ready to apply a lot to certain of your neighbors, you know, and.
I didn't hear you.
What did you apply the law to? When did your neighbors purchase their lot? Their lot, right?
Uh, yeah, we sub purchased theirs in. It was October of nineteen seventy and we signed and closed on November sixth of two thousand.
Okay, so this is probably in place.
Or is previous or required?
You're correct. So, when you bought it, you didn't.
I'm sorry?
So, when you bought it, you're. Buy stuff with.
Right. I mean, I know that fire marshal can say. They've done a lot of fires down in that area. The dust becomes a big issue. Keep our, how we. We come in. Summit. Super best. Stand up. Going to this, it gets. It's pretty hectic. When you ride. Fire. It's. True, it's, it's able to just continuously constantly state. In there, still within areas. Well, you guys, we rest, he feels that it's not appropriate. To just have a single access point, but it's just pointed out, it hasn't recommended to the county or moratorium. It's such a concern. And frankly, that was. That was, I recall that was a big reason why. They cross. I know. So, they would better facilitate the rest of the service. Fair. So. It's just a. Question maybe for. Is there any provision for him to request the wedding moratorium or to have one enacted? I mean, Jason certainly writes an email and say, hey, I have a few taxes. Not everybody mobiles in this area, but is there any provision in code to enact a provision like that? Or is that just an interesting concern for like?
Yeah. Exactly. Well, anyway, you have to show what, you have to show what. How do you? What is language? Says the comprehensive plan, the services section says that adequate services shall be provided. And I don't recall losing the wall to that fact. It's there. And he can show. Out of just like. Northside Fire. They're saying there's some situation. Please. Contact these. Uh, additionally, it doesn't solve. But certainly, that's, that's just. Explaining that is the protection. Also. Yeah. Say we answer. Now, he's not saying. See that. Better is. Like. Maybe we can. So. So, but I don't know. But you say it's like. State clerical. Yeah. I don't know what those are. I've never heard of that. He's. I guess, well. Yeah, I don't. Yeah. The state. State clerical, whatever. I'm going to guess what it says. That. So, the address back. You know. Language. This is any of that same comment back then. Challenge with the second U press. Is a statement. Shouldn't make that. On the. We need to cross. So, we get that. It just wasn't. I think. That, that, that's what I struggle with. Yeah. And the more. The more people are there, the more traffic I'm doing. There is a fire. There's worse situations. I don't. Well, and that, that's an interesting comment because we just approved. Three lots. We got this. So, so it's interesting to see. But it's, it's. It was complex. Again. How does it get to you right now? Without the. I can understand the. This very condition. Why that's the condition of all. Condition. Whether and use the condition as a need to be changed. So. That's the very. It's got to play. Two. Instead of just stopping. So, it's. It wasn't required. So. They required to split the fires. With the. It shows the first. So. So, those two lots, so they got left out of that re-plant. And it's. You're out of. You. Maybe one of your personal. So, they have, so. So, that's it. Same lots. It's like, please. Wow. So. It's not here. It's there. They need to understand that more. He is part of the neighbors. And now maybe we have full size, small full size, all that. Okay, so that's just what I have there. So, right now, we have three lots. Inside is only. You have, they save them residents. And you leave two potential. Full time. Precares. What's the formula for this? With that. If they put a second. Same with that residence, if it's still available. And the two, you know, if I just want to. You and two. Reasons on the. Lot. So, two homes, two eighteen news. Or else, no. Right with the lot. Two RCs, two homes. So. Standing up there can be six. Long drive. But then you. If one year. Usually you can't just say, oh, I can't just live. Take that girl. Relation. Right, yes. I would. Which is a lot. Do you have? Do you have? No. Because the lot, the condition of the lot was. Extraordinary condition. Both. Not one that was. Was operated by. Yeah. And, uh, yeah. Another condition. I don't, so that actually, no, I'm not. Because it wasn't a client. On the subject. That was. And that's already not something. Side of yours. Or. Commission to better place. I was correct here. Initially. Which would be paying its arrectation. Back to both. Creation. I ask you. But I have a question. If that's. I agree about something. It will get. They bring some new purpose. Could apply specifically to these two lots. Even that's what, I don't know if that's the original change, just for these two lots. Not always the original change, but this one, this one where initial scale down just. That's what that's. I mean, I think it's also making talk about. This is creative. It's different. That's one of the conclusions law that. Yeah. I would wonder about. Well. Because it allows it to happen without. So, in and of itself, there are no changes today. The downriver creates possibility that you can do it. Do it routines, but because that's way of. And this requirement isn't there anymore. So, that then. Great. And see, argument both ways, frankly, I have this. The chief said. I think he's got some legitimate concerns on the other hand. It doesn't address the. One way. In and out issue, which is probably a bigger one, and it does address the issue that there's an exception here. That's not going to be paid, no matter what happens. Or somebody. It's sort of hard. I'm sure. Right, yes. Leave it after, otherwise. As a conclusion, why I don't, I am, I'm not clear about. The public service session. That isn't a problem. Yeah. Very good. Yeah. Great. So. Now. Importance. By. Covered. Danger of the section with this up to. Cover the zone. And all. The distasteful arrangement of the. So, we have this off, yeah, but the. Because all you sound is up. Just that one. The zone change is the term. It was ZC three sixty five eighteen. I saw. The song. Okay, so the advice just. The extent of that. Zone change three sixty five. The only thing left is this. That's. That condition that ended up true of result change. Probably goes this next one. To the end of gold issues about three forty mile from payment to the end. There, but that's not covered by this condition. So. As we have to. Is the relevancy of that. That condition. It's all change. It only applies to these two parts of the region. They don't have to divide. To have houses. Desire. But not the ownership. But. You should want to please define special areas or sites. I'm actually going to go to the application to answer that question because that's a question they ask on the application. Either identifying. Or sites around the area. Does the plan. So, they are not applicable. So, we're talking about. Those sites. Our commercial park, archaeological site of significance. And. Damn operations.
So we're talking about annual sites, archaeological sites of significance and damn operations. I call it a preservation of cultural resources, historical, historic areas, sites, structures, museums, things of that nature. Cultural resources. You know, ecological law. But again, I note that I know the department of fish and water did not comment on this one. Architectural significance and scenic significance. So by that is like. Is it a change? If see determine if that any.
Now, public services. Actually, back to the fact that the condition that ended up in that zone changing. Was a very good condition. That was agreed to by the applicant. And we all have the ready to provide us with that change. The recommendation. But it probably did just the same to this. Saying that it wasn't for the kind of conflict. Not to say it's setting one of the. And. So type of check, set of check, four. So check seven, type of four. I'm actually. Your own change.
All right, thanks for getting.
Sure, can we do that now for work in decision matter? Yes, it can change. So there was the rate of the hospital and this one condition. We argue that, but. That was. And that's made on the cap. It's just. And nobody appealed it at the time. Right. Mark, if it mark, if it going. It's just able to take just to take that one condition off. So it's a notation. A key of that nation. First then the question goes to the. So it's kind of rude to give. And it's I hope that I get to. So we have to do. Yeah, have to agree to it. And it traveled with property. So. At the C C three sixty five, yes, this was the additional idea, generational recognition. It says we have more. Yeah. Which might be really interesting because his condition closed up his property. It's going to be an obvious undue financial worth. Or that's not true. Certainly seems like it would be portioned against every other one. It would cost him, including that was was very large cost. Uh, but you know, same equation here. The back house. Last phase. Yeah, it was a phase, yeah. All right, hey. There's something. Really delay decision. Do you want to relax, sorry?
So forth and back there, right, sort of.
All right, people. Two by nine, it says everything is thousand pay. Clearly have it. Because of some reason, so. The zone change. But such. No change. All right. So I. Sentence. Yeah. Says to go forward, says there. They are. Their advice. Case. So change. Advice we do. It's also interesting, I think, this. Zone boundaries. Creating standards, etc., which shall pay. Back. As we stated. Ways. So a lot. That mission. Those were. In them. Say. Be this last north south portion. We found them. Yeah, I mean, that's. And. Right, so then the fact. So. State. Yes, that's. That's what the field of these. And you guys, I had to do the. And there. As you know, there's no. So this. I trust. I'm sorry. All right, you can do it, trust. Yeah, and you can describe it. A lot of options. They did a lot. Here's a lot. Just need some of those. Yeah, there's something out there. So. You can ramblers. I can say we've been there. Such. Is that for the why? Revelation. Okay. So that's my question to go perhaps. We can't have the rules, we can't delay the decision to. Yeah, I believe we can do that. Yeah, because it, it's not, it's not really clear how to, how we will all write out the conclusions to law. And they have to get into the, right now, it's recommendation, conclusions are supported, recommendation approved. I mean, the recommendation of denial, I think we have a different set of conclusions to law. So the really standard question used to be was just that you would do not, right? Right. And I thought I don't know. Remember, because again. Chapter seven, ten twelve. That's water. Yeah, and even this, this conclusion, you know, too. Because I think it was fine. Because it talks about natural standards. Water and standards that were chapter seven, as well. So. Just. So this out. So I, I say. Yes, we could take. It's kind of backwards, we can take a break. Come back at a certain time to make conclusions and make recommendations. But. We have to commission the role on playing off. Right? That's what I was. Well, that's what it says. Our amendments and solvency. That you have ten days to forward it, basically, and days to make a decision because go on to the forward condition to. So. I think they're talking about this on Marcus, but not too many to do that to believe you pay. Just none of this at least agree with the notion that who read the way it's written. We would reverse based on view of the direction and say that it creates a habit. Like because it creates the opportunity for the management to happen without it to happen in the road. And, and I regret to say that if you're not going to do that, it doesn't solve. That's where we are. There we are. United States. This is concerned, but. Reason to, I kind of agree with you, but I'm not sure it's relevant. It's concluded in one. So it's. Seems to be the nature of this combat because it's going to be a human. Exactly. And you got similar. It's a phenomenon. As aggressive, therefore. Saying that along with the other things will solve that easily. So. Yeah, that's. Getting on towards the. Getting on towards the. Conclusion three. So on conclusion three, specifically, do you feel like it's okay to just to say a great hazard or maybe to change the. Way it's paid. And say that to just to create a potential hazard. A future, a future split about. Do something about the road, create a future hazard. Will create a hazard. I don't know how specific. Yeah, I want to say. Just if we go with this end, we'll create a hazard on adjacent property or. On property that will affect the Jason. Especially the moment the way that case came down. I just agree to. As would be. In a conditional reason. Let's do a real contract. To provide a degree, therefore. So, we want to. Or two standards should be the ones to say we understand it. Therefore, if we. Still, it goes back to. If we were to. When they take it up and again decide. Here anything or everything, see if it warrants. Getting off. Getting on. And. Well, there's some. Hey. I think it would best ask the question, the extent of its own change. Whether we had a. Precision effect of that. But that its own change has taken up the rest of the section. Entire section. I think there'd be a great case to say, yes, absolutely. Right. So that all the guys start taking back the. Now. So if they want to do that, I like. But it's. So. Yeah. Since God before as well. Yeah, before. David, you can do. It's maybe a stretch. But if. Maybe he's supposed to. Here. So that patient.
How is that they were able to call that patient representation?
Here it's some. Yeah, it's all. The. It's yeah, it is. Is it's a recommendation. It's not a requirement, it's a recommendation. Or we're not the ordinance, so it's the right part for us. Saying it's a norm because. Even though it's a recommendation, it's on the board. So. On the actual. So again. They're all those. Places, they're all those. The chain. So, I think we all hope it's necessary to change it, we made the recommendation to. It was. Happens to be the desire. This is Commissioner Braddish. As I move directly now to. Be zero, 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 five, dash, two, one. Progressively. Modification. It's a modification. Service the. Well, potentially create a hazard. Will be. Maybe zero, 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 five. Has stated. Is there a second? Please correct about that second. We have a motion directly to the aisle of. File number zero, 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 five, dash, two, one. In a dirty discussion. During the session. The decision is based on evidence, and that is that part of the. Ready, that's we continue tearing. I believe it was dropped from the back. Conclusion to apply. Possession not involved, they would have copied that actually that we're taking the. To obtain conditional use from that. If. Modification. By the new application of the. Pardon. Standards required by. Number two, this is. Okay, this is the second still standing, yes. Any further discussion? Hearing unallied, very much say aye, aye. If you say aye. So. So. To put the ordinance in place of the other ones. Anyway, this call. Senator. Too easy. No, we're absolutely not. There's two of the. Yeah. That's the thing with the. Behind the ordinance. Or. Probably more towards direct. So. 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 Nineteen. It's only one. Actually, it's six or seven. After that. Two. Two. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Twenty. First. This is the time we have to. South ours. So. Wait, they. So we. Just the first four sections. First section, which is seven, six, ten. So basically. Really short of them. Should stop the value of just. So we're first. Split over twice, and then the. Test on the side of the word. So. Sort of set the. Weird stuff. It was using. So that's. So when you put it back, which is helpful. They established that they do withdraws was the. Question. On flats. But they did. They did ask. Back in May, we asked time to set a meeting. To discuss. This. So we did. And we had a couple minutes. One. Over the page, he was just. You know, the party commission for that condition on the. Grab that black people, something. Back in May, when the House of Representatives took that out. It doesn't mean we have to. So that's why that all came about. I don't know. This was a. And I know also that if we put the. If we put the page design up. So. It was assured. Sure, they're short to. Kind of advertise to request now plus add three. Not getting out against the paper. It's very. Everybody's saying, yeah. Yeah. First of all. We keep asking the board that we have a story for ten. So that chance to. Then come back here with the. First of those. Think of it as a. Conference. I think they marched. Without any. Yeah. Then. Yeah, that's. You're not giving. Or you're bringing your. It's even harder because you're running with. First turn. Yeah. So they did try to crowd and show that. People could win or something, could show up. Most of them. I don't think it's starting to like. Particularly. And everybody was all about. Here you go. So these were what I've been working on. Twenty chat. I'm making every other Monday for two hours. I've been. Last week. As I expressed to them. As I expressed to them. Well. Say to a regular. And you stay going. I studied that the existing cop plan. If it's writing or objectives are going. They're clearly they're able. They're out of date. The text is not a date, but we're not saying, all right, this guy, oh, we're just going to throw that out. Which is kind of what the committee's ambition. Was here's now something brand new, stand on its own legs. That will be tried. So. If we look at the existing cop plan. Go through that. And really dissect. One, the text of every component. What's in the text? Uh, I've been trying to find it delivered that way. This. We look at the preamble. It says, these components are made up of plan. And investigate them and come up with goals as they apply the land use regulation. Constipated that. Through the the text. See what parts need that test number one. So it's. These need that test. It could apply directly to many three which will actually. Or if it don't seem to be in that test. What I think I think really nature, they just some like the. J V through and there. Go page or something. There's two columns there. So that seems to apply. It wasn't directly applied or stuff that's no really. Go through that exercise on every control. There's. And I've tried to express that there's interaction between the elements. And they all sure came toward land use because it says. Ray Legend. The land use department. Has to be key of the exercise. Uh, and and right now, because that resolves into the land use map. So. Keep filtering it down. And I can envision a giant matrix. That's one that's why I started. How? Just comparing all these things. Comparing all the components and somehow. Aligning them so that like things can vary. And they should have been like a nice model. And these words just. So do that first and then see. Again, I'd say whether it. And it would all to replace the existing office plan. They didn't point saying. And some options to say, here's the strong points or here's the high points that. Groups. Groups. Back in two thousand four and five. That was together on behalf of the citizens. It's a good exercise. Several. What's that? I choose. Chad, do that exercise. As a series. Instead of the. Some of the banks. And say code allows that. If one of these departments, if we listen out, doesn't totally apply, you can dismiss it. Would. Treat it. And say, well, okay, so as a series. Other shorts are. It's the first. It's no sign. Possibly that. Just around the county. It obviously doesn't. If wildfire. Exactly. Wildfire is going to be the portion of that that really warrants something such. And again. Uh, choice of. Yeah, maybe say like take care of itself or whatever. Village concept. But that's an example. It doesn't have to be like here how we look at the existing cop plan. And as a book. About every walk, county and there is. That's like it was in place. So what is. How does that affect land use for English? It should say it was an adversary and have to do this. And I. So we don't stand in favor. Say if it's necessary. You just kind of get. And therefore you can have these small component right up. It would be any technical causes. Rocking itself wasn't. We have someone to do this. But. That's kind of the background. I have the two system. One little thing down. For those of you who read. Components was a group, strong, strong preamble. There's a very nice where it's got to be explained to the public. On public now. But this is a comprehensive plan. This is part of the code. And whether that means. Even being on support, fighting in some cases, let's say. Lines are busy. It's direction, it's not law. There is. Expect that it's going to be changed. That is what I. Our code said, D code says. The D code is. D code says. For a. You know, how it is all changed. Show the necessity for such change. It was basically changed. But okay, so what's the assessment? Started to build that in the comprehensive plan by acknowledging the fact that state is not. Cardigan grand. He pointed the data as I pointed out any time. Land use says, gee, it just happened. All that section three months. That's very sure. That's how it's one of this. Says. Yeah, it is. And maybe that be the change. You know, during various discussions, saying. How do you prove a section? Very simple. Extreme situation. Forty days. So let's let's find the reason. Quite subject. That fits better than. Absolutely. And they must have happened right there. Now, unless and where it was. And in the past, seen them. County or through a cop plan discussion, investigation. Now, that's the world. This should obviously be. So do the. Assessment change. Those ways that we can come in. Take some of the. Okay. So. Maybe like the public here has got to be. Summarizing. Yeah. Well. Uh, it's. I guess it's all P B M sales. Those are all P B M. But even there. You've got the market features. All that knows. Right. All have. Probably say to you. Worded after. Yeah. Sorry, I. It's like. I thought it was originally dotted word or maybe it was a word perfect. In fact, I don't want to. Well, maybe that's one suggestion. Uh, just. Me. We. I know. Since we. Now, the lead to me is. Let's expand the lead. Because we got to call on it. And I think that's what we can do it is to start. Start with Jesus. She said, is you know, that was. Figure out the lead points. And we're going to cancel later. Replace them wherever. Sure, there's going to be. A lot of data, most of the data in the thing is. So I'll change. But. Unless I'm. Natural way. So I always go the same. Why can't we include? The source. Okay. And I see. Yeah. Yeah. High level. Where do we think we're headed? Are we going to? Well, I think it is. Yeah. Five or six subareas. Interesting about subareas. Say it's out of the subarea plans or still going to be some. So I'll say some some element of the plan that's down at the subarea. Low detail, but the rest of the subarea could be. Do we have any thoughts about that? One one reason. I ask the question is, Don is asking if it's. Investigation into. Getting the census data. Uh. For some of those basic. Statistical basis. And we'll need to know whether we need to be able to present that in the. That is what there is. And so fair amount of work to do that. It was a one time thing that we'll be able to. So I said, if you don't break that, it's the same as moving. Well, the existing city. Yeah, I know the uh, clearly the incorporated. The data from the census data from the incorporated city block. And so I'm looking at those areas of subareas. Looks like they're pretty much approximately exist. Does approximately exist. Yeah, so. And we have to try to break that out. Maybe. But. We have to take one of those lines. That's another exercise. We now have the five great planes. But those things side by side. To a matrix or whatever. Because they all. Several. They all do the same topics. Go up and down. Here's for us. And look for the similarities. There's broad similarities about the Bible. And they're not giving. My judgment is very. Drives and Larry. Yes, I agree with some of those words, but. Like being sort of saying this. So sure that we do that. And we come back. We have said. So we do that. We didn't acknowledge the work and then in that. I I don't know. This this whole chapter talks about the conflict. It's like, oh, this is the special. Say. Say it was. Is that the same? Yes. Say the same. Results. Reasons why. I don't. I just have to do. That's. So what is it? Somebody there who's like on that pre shirt. While they wanted to send them to the. Everyone. Pre shirt would actually really. She couldn't. The way. Land use. That actually. Whereas they didn't really. So so yeah, it's the same things that. Which is. Pretty sure they're doing a job. That some aliens. I've had a couple of college. So pre shirt again. This is layout. Question. Section is quite a pretty much. Which is what I said. Sub area. It's very. To jump, right? Start to. What he do. To create. So. What the village wants. The reason why it would have to be just that. And then they go to get. Whatever. Four or five. Just to back that up. More so than what's in the. Obviously, there's projects and maybe. Make sure it's second to third language. Limiting. There. So that's good. But yeah, I don't know why. Why. So. I don't know how I was going to handle. Yeah. All the possible reasons. Citizens. Every. It was. Thank you. So yeah. Similarities. All desires there. On. Struggling by. It was. Republicans and land. Here's the. Their rural. City. It's, you know. Yeah. Very sensitive. It's a very. Could be, you know. You have to know it. It's like the. The blocks of their work. Just has a general discussion about it. Saying. Because it does. I I don't. Perhaps that we all. Describe. Tweaks. Because again, they all section. Get the maps up. Because it's just easiest. And I I wish we had time to make sources to to take that to the next step. And say, okay, there it is generally. Uh, looking at the court decisions, how they view over that. And they have. And the polls for the polls say. That's not a solid line. Sorry, folks. Why? Because that line was there. Well, I'm sorry, it's not solid. Fair enough. Well said. The interesting thing is. Pretty much. They were top line, right? Those nations. Exactly as. So. But I'm not. We would not. As a sort of. Basically a lot. Maker zone. Right? Start off. Yeah, and and this. I follow your rationale doing that because it says we. Just want to. Over. But that almost also. The ten twenty five ten. That way the air admits that it could be. And yet people say, oh, no, this is. It was only the. That's a good. Why? Why did you pick them? Because this right here. So. And now I say. And it's. So. It's. If we. If we come up with some descriptions that are a little bit. Fortunately, reality. By that. And what? You can't. Thanks. I don't. Yeah, that's what it takes. You know, this like N C S do. Ashley. You can do everything. Twenty years. I don't know. So really, I knew it was. We was. We do. Please. We somewhere finds out. Say sure. Yeah. People. This. Right. Or. Yeah, that's. But not it actually. Well, because that's why. You're sure. They're showing where the stuff. But I just. Census. On the sub area. So said right here. This on the.